Ernie Bunch, Tom McGuire and Paul Elkema are not here. They're all on vacation, but Tom Augerton is here. Tom, where are you at? We have another newcomer to this, this business meeting we've held. This will be the third one we've had. We've the other, other two were very successful. And so I guess they're running at about a six month interval. But we try to wait until we have enough items to give a report and also hear feedback. So it'll be a discussion type of meeting, not about your specific issues because we'll refer that on. But if there's something that of general in business in the town, we really want to hear it. And we also have members of the community here and they're welcome to speak too. And one of the first things I want to do is introduce our new town manager, Grady Miller. He was brought in extensive nationwide search or Arizona wide search.
Darn, that sounded better before. I'm very, I'm very pleased to be here and our, we're very fortunate to have such a strong and thriving business community. And I'm very glad to see all of you here. And I, I've met a number of you already and look forward to working with you. Our business community is really the lifeblood of, of Cave Creek. And much of the employment is all provided by you, obviously. But the key part is our own budgeting and what we receive in the terms of, of sales tax dollars and all the additional, you know, people that come in and visit Cave Creek as a result of your businesses. It's just very, very critical and very important to our community. And with that, I thank you and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
We're looking for big things out of Grady. He started out with a number of years in, in Peoria. And then, and Fountain Hills and Back East and Kingman. So he's, he is, as far as I know, the most experienced town manager we've ever had. And so we're very lucky to have him. First thing we're going to do today is pass the microphone. Now, what we typically do is just pass it and give your name, who you are, and if you hear representative business or the public, and then we'll pass it on. So we know who everybody in the room is. We'll start here with my new acquaintance, guitar man, Ed. Thanks, Bob. Ed Heisler, Black Mountain Guitar Company, over downtown next to the west end Circle K.
Matt Stuckey, I'm with Carefree Spirits Distillery.
Jenna Carlson, I'm with Animal Health Services.
Everyone should introduce themselves, Nina especially.
Tom Augerton, council.
Mike Spray, True West Building.
I'm Catherine Royer, the vice mayor. I'm bringing it back to Nina.
She's so humble.
Thank you. Nina Spitzer, Cave Creek Tourism Bureau and the Cave Creek Corner Newsletter. Thank you.
Mike Larson, Larson Esq. Meeting.
Jay Stenson, Cave Creek Welding.
Joe, I am running for council, 23 year resident.
Donna Cece, Arizona Horseback Adventures.
I don't recognize Donna without her cowboy hat, by the way. Mike Potwimer, I'm representing the Kiwanis Marketplace.
Steve Feld with Carefree Cave Creek Chamber.
Cynthia Driscoll, Cave Creek Planning Commission, and my business is almost in Cave Creek, Carefree Physical Therapy.
Dusty Rhodes, Town Council.
Hal Marin, Town Engineer and Public Works Director.
Evelyn Johnson, Cave Creek Museum.
Dale Samar, and I'm with Realty Executives, and I also published the Cave Creek Visitors Guide for their last 18 years.
Bob Hughes, local Cave Creek resident.
I'm Teresa Rees, I'm the deputy town manager and town clerk.
And Jim Ford, former deputy fire chief, now doer of all, I guess.
Sean Cruz, Cruz Weiser, utility director.
Marshall Adams Stein, Town Marshal.
Stephen Prowl, planner, planning division.
Well, thank you. Welcome to everybody. The format today is going to be an open discussion. So we're not having minutes. It is televised, right? At least this portion here is televised. I hope I'm standing on the camera. But everything else is not, but everything you say is recorded and do anything with it, but it is going out for the public. And so in discussion, if there are specific issues somebody has with their particular business, we'll probably refer that on for your specific, but anything you think might be of general interest or to the group, we're more than happy to hear that. And of course residents are welcome to speak up and participate as well. First of all, I'm going to start off with, with the big picture. There's a lot of things going on in town. First thing is the budget. We have a budget this year, which is really not a budget that I'm used to seeing in business. It's more, it's a spending limitation. And before you spend anything more than $25,000, it has to go back to council for approval. So it's not as hard and fast as what I would consider a, a business budget. But it's $57.4 million. And of that $57.4, 25 million is going towards capital projects and really deferred maintenance projects. We have a lot of deferred maintenance town and we'll get to that in just a moment. The second big part of that is the operating expenses. And that is the fire department, the, the water companies, we buy water, we electricity, all the things that salaries, all the things the town running and cities and towns are existential businesses. We would not be here if we didn't have the services like fire, water, police, sewer, on and on. So it really is existential. We are not, we don't have a money printing machine like the feds do. And we're not in the political game like the state is. We are a nonpartisan government. And we're here to serve the people and to provide essential services. A couple of the big things that are in that investment budget deserve some comment. The first is the Phoenix Interconnect. We have a single pipeline that goes down to nearly CAP canal. And it brings water up here 12 and a half miles, four pump stations on it. And then it goes into our treating facilities up on Basin Road. And it's been in there for 30, 40 years. 35 years. We've got some brains in the back of the room. And about once a year, something happens where it goes down and it is old. Some parts of it have never been maintained and it is the town's lifeline to water. There's no backup. Many, 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 what we call engineering, single points of failure. One thing goes wrong and everything shuts down. Any one of those four pump stations goes bad, we're down. We have spare pumps, but we don't have spare electrical and check valves and lines and all those sorts of things. So it takes all four pump stations running to get the water here. We can't do with one, two, or three. So it truly is a lifeline for us. That's been recognized for 10 years at least. And on Kerry Dirac's regime as town manager, I think her most significant accomplishment was negotiating with Phoenix to A, get rid of a potential lawsuit to sue us for some things to deal with the water service, South and Carefree Highway. And the second thing is, is to get an agreement with Phoenix to treat our water. This is not new water. This is our water that we would have them treat and they will bring it up here. And if you see that pipeline on Cave Creek Road right now, that is the, the Phoenix system coming this way. And that allows us to take water from Phoenix. It is going into that new construction you see just north of Lowe's. That is going to be a big tank that's mostly underground, partially underground. How, how much is? 10 feet. It's a big hole in the ground right now. And it'll go into that tank, then we'll have pumps to pump it into our system, which will feed both Cave Creek. And we put a lot of our water over into Desert Hills. So it will feed all of the town water system that we're responsible for. So if something goes wrong on that pipeline, number, it won't, we'll have water. It's enough water to handle our winter time demand, but not our summertime demand. Our summertime demand is 75% higher than the winter. And Phoenix would not give us any more water. We wanted any more capacity, I should say, because it's our water. We wanted more and they said no. So, you know, we're, we have our foot in the door though. So that's always a possibility. The second thing, it took care of that lawsuit. We got a relationship back. They, they dropped the possibility of a lawsuit. They're now going to supply the water south of Carefree Highway generally. They're going to put that water in there and then they'll be hooked up to our sewer system. So we will have additional reclaimed water, which will directly displace CAP water that's going elsewhere. So it actually is a water generating project as well as a reliability project. The second big thing that's happening. Before I do that, I think back on the budget, interconnect's very expensive. We've been trying to build this for at least four years. COVID happened. Inflation happened and then Phoenix delayed their project again and again. And so there's no sense building it until we know Phoenix has theirs in the ground. We kept looking says, we got any pipes coming this way? Because everybody, every town is under some strain with the amount of inflation that we have right now. So of that, of the cost of that, 13 million is being borrowed. And we have a $2 million grant, which dramatically reduces the cost to us. So the, the rate payers are going to pay the rest of that, and most of the rest of it. There are some other miscellaneous funds coming in there. Now, the beauty behind borrowing money for that is that the benefits to that line are not right now. They're in the future. Water's on today. But future customers will pay their share of that pipeline. So instead of trying to get today's customers and many, I'm a customer and many of us are, that will be spread out over 20 years. And we get very, very low interest rates. We have some interest rates, some bonds right now that are less than 2%. So we have a real advantage there. The second big project that's going on is the firehouse. It's under construction as we speak, just down the road here, a few blocks. And a fire truck to go in it and some water trucks to supply water in areas that don't have fire hydrants. So we have a lot of stuff going on in there. And by the way, during the summer, during fire season like this, we put on a brush truck. We have a brush truck that's specifically designed for wildland fires. During daylight hours in the summertime at a fairly large cost, so we can have a very quick response if there are brush fires. The third big one are streets. The town fell way behind on paving and maintaining streets. And so we're putting almost $3 million into streets, whereas we typically in years past have put half a million, something like that. I'm getting a head shake in the back of the room. So it's, it's a huge increase and we're on a three year program to catch up. It includes a couple of new streets, but it also brings streets up to standard. We're far below the standard. And these are engineering standards that we have a contractor come in and evaluate all the streets in town and put together a program. And we got way behind in that program. We're going to catch up over the next three years. Fires, we've had four brush fires this year. If you want to see how close we have come to burning houses down, at least if not hurting people, go down and take a look on Schoolhouse Road, look to the right there and huge scar and it's right up to the back door of some of those houses. And we had four of those this year. Here's the difference. Before we had one fire truck, two minutes from the fire station, the fire broke out and they didn't get it put out. That was Yokatia Fire, burned 12 structures and evacuated half the town. And by the way, I wasn't going to say this, but we now have an evacuation route. You see the blue signs that north into town. We have put together a very onerous way to get out of town from the north if Schoolhouse or Spur Cross is blocked, but it will work. And you can move a thousand cars an hour on one lane of traffic. So it will get a lot of people out of here in a short period of time, even though it is a dirt road. So streets are a big deal. The thing that's going to come up very quickly is water. And we are just completing our water master plan. This is done every 10 years. It was done in 2013. That was my introduction to the town when I was on the water advisor committee 10 years ago. And this one is far, far, far more comprehensive. I personally consider that 2013 plan to be a failure. We put it on the shelf and that was it. It was not because we didn't need to do things, because it really didn't identify things and look at things. But this, this master plan has already paid some dividends. So we're looking for great things from this master plan. It addresses the sewer system, which is the black hole of town economics. And it also addresses both Desert Hills and Carefree Water, the facilities, the supplies, what we're going to do, a whole range of things in that plan. And it's just in time because in the next six months, the plans for the Central Arizona Project Water among the seven basin states, which range from almost, maybe it is a Canadian border. How far up does it go? Catherine, Catherine used to work for C, so she's becoming even more of an asset to town. What, what's the most northern state that is in the, the upper bay? Yeah. Wyoming, off from Wyoming to Mexico on the Colorado River. And the Colorado River was allocated paper wise for 17 million acre feet of water. That's what it was producing back when they did that. It's producing 11. So there are a lot of people with a piece of paper saying, I get water, who aren't going to get water. So when you hear us talk about wet water, that's water you can actually drink. It's not something you have to chew up and it's a piece of paper. That's being negotiated as we speak and it's the basin states, seven basin states, Mexico and, and the feds, because the feds own the dams, they own the river. They're the, they're the final arbiter of everything that happens on the river. There'll be some changes beginning in 2027. Catherine, if I, if I, this is supposed to be a discussion. So if you raise your hand if I make any mistakes here. And if, but in the meantime, we've got to get an agreement to how the water is going to be split up. Because it's going to be, there's going to be some changes, especially to the called the lower basin. That's California and Nevada, Mexico and Arizona. And Arizona is the junior partner. We have the lowest priority system of anybody and that's going to come into play. So hints keep coming out about this. We have asked, at the league last year, I asked questions, what should we be doing on this? They wouldn't tell us. So we've got more information this year, but what I expect to happen is number one, is there's a lot of agriculture that is not going to get water. And, and that water is, some of it will just disappear. I've heard people say, well, we're going to take the ag water to grow cities. I'm real skeptical there. People are saying we're going to have 1.5 million new residents in the valley over the next 20 years. I don't know where they're going to get the water. So when I say something like that, the next thought is there's a big political fight coming. Because once you decide the big picture, how much water's there, now Arizona's got to look at, well, we got this much water. What are we, how are we going to divvy that up? What's going to happen? And that's coming in the next six months. That conversation will start. So instead of hearing so much about fire, you're going to hear a lot about the Central Arizona Project and the Colorado River and the Department of the Interior. And we're going to be right in the middle of that. We're already starting discussions with important players there. And it'll be not only a planning issue with our water master plan. It will also be a political issue with the other cities and towns and with the Department of Water Resources. And to some extent, the Central Arizona Project. But at some point it's, once you determine how much water you have, it kind of passes out of there and into the state political arena. The other issue that's going to be big and you're going to hear about here is outdoor water conservation. That's the other thing they're talking about as, as ways to mitigate the reduction in water. And what Arizona's going to be, is already, I think we're going to from 2.7 to 1.5 million acre feet. So it's a pretty substantial cutback for the state of Arizona. So you'll be hearing a lot about that in the, in the future. Another issue on the table for us is state lands. We have contracts with state lands for 10,000 acres over on the west side, just north of Carefree Highway. We have zoned that land. It's all zoned. And 4,000 acres of that is zoned as open space. And so we are doing preliminary evaluation work right now on what it would take to take ownership over that open space over there. And that will be an item on the town political agenda very soon. The financial health of town, always important to me. I'm a business person. Never, never received a salary from the government. I guess I've worked in it, but I've never received a salary. We have $30 million in the bank. And we have a $14 million general fund. So we have basically two years of money. But we're going to spend some of that $30 million on streets, on the firehouse. That decision was made a while back. We decided not to borrow money for that, but because we have so much in reserve, we're going to use some of that money and invest it. It's not being used to pay salaries or electricity or things like that. It's being used on one time investment opportunities that benefit the town to a great extent. Just to give you a real quick numbers. $57 million budget. $28 million are, is the operating side of that budget. That is the, the three water companies and the general fund. That plays for your water, your fire, your police. What'd I leave out? There's a lot of, all the general operations. Then you have $25 million that we're investing. That is the interconnect project, the firehouse, the streets and things. The rest is just us, you know, 4% or so. So if you remember those three numbers, 57, 28, 24, you've got a feel for the budget in the town of Cave Creek. So if we decided to stop investing, we would, we would have $28 million worth of expenses, operating expenses type, of which half come from the water rate payers. The other half comes from things like state revenue taxes, the fees we charge, things like this. And the sales tax portion of that has been growing at 10, 11% a year. So the, the business down at Carefree Highway have really added a lot of new sales tax revenue to the town. And that's where your fire department comes from. The fire department's going to cost us $5 million a year. And there are no new taxes for that. So that, the growth that the town has seen on Carefree Highway is paying for that. Are you paying for it if you live in Cave Creek? Well, when you go to Cave, when you walk around, I bet less than 10% of the people shopping in there. So really people all over the north side of the valley are paying for that. Now, if you think that's unfair, hold that thought. Cause when you go down to buy a car or furniture or all the other things that we don't have in Cave Creek, you're paying for someone else's. So there's a big balance going here. But we didn't have that before. We got it now. And that money is being put to really good use and it prevented a property tax. So now we're getting some things that are going to affect the businesses here. The, the traffic pedestrian study. I'm sorry to see that. I don't see anybody here from the east end, the entertainment area. But we have a traffic study in-house, in-hand that showed that we assess danger and too many accidents, vehicle pedestrian. So if you've looked on the, that side of town, you'll see there's new walkways. You'll see there's no parking areas. You'll see we've had built years to prevent illegal parking because we don't have a lot of police around in the middle of the night. Being we have a low crime area. I'm looking over at the marshal. We were discussing that a minute ago. And we have three new things coming this year, and that is three new lighted crosswalks will be put across Cave Creek Road from really down here towards the corner and all the way up to the crossing between the, the Roadhouse and Harolds. So people cross at night, it'll be lighted, they'll be able to see, and we will get people across the road more safely. Another thing going on, you want to watch, there's a dark skies evaluation, a group in town rewrote our town, a draft of our, of our town lighting ordinance, which is fairly strict. And to make it into something that is dark skies compliant, which is, doesn't really cost the town a lot of money. Fountain Hills and Sedona and Flagstaff and who else? Bob, there's one other town in Arizona that's cotton, cottonwood. So there's a lot, a number of towns here that are certified dark skies. So it's kind of a prestige thing. It's nice to have. It adds to the mystique of Cave Creek. And when I go outside of town and you probably have the same experience, when you talk to somebody, oh, I love Cave Creek. I love the way it is up there. Well, this is one way to help keep it same. So we're looking forward to that coming. Bob, I think you wanted to say something about dark skies. Do you want to? Okay, okay. Next thing on my list here is Bike Week. Again, those restaurants aren't here, but I think we can do better on traffic flow. And I have, I spent a lot of time out with my stopwatch and my camera and a little map of the area. And I, I think there are some things we can do and I'm going to be looking for the town, I'm looking at the town engineer now. I'm looking, going to be looking for getting traffic through town faster. 15 minute wait to me is unacceptable. And without affecting the intent of the project of a Bike Week, I'm not recommending doing away with it. I'm just saying, let's do it better. If, if there's a way to do it better, let's find that way and do it. The next thing on here is we're in the middle of election season. The election is July 30th. Ballots go out about July 1st. And on there are, are two, I guess initiatives. No, they're not really initiatives. There are two items for, for public vote. First is the town council barely approved a proposal to the voters, submission to the voters for four year terms. The town is in a slight minority. There's, we're the only town I can think of that has two year terms. It was in the Arizona Republic. I was going to bring the article and I forgot it, but it was in the Arizona Republic the other day. And so that'll be on the budget, budget, election ballot. And the next one is home rule. That's a really important one because if that fails, that $57 million budget becomes 5 million. Now, think about that. Our fire department alone is 5 million. So that has, has to pass. And Grady has some ideas. One of the things he's talked about is taking a look at how we manage that. Maybe we go to a, a different system. The state, it's a state mandated and they give you four options on how you do your budgets designed to force you to control expenses. And we'll look at some other ones here in the next, next year or so. The final thing on here is the rodeo. We had another massively Cecil Rodeo, Mike Pop and Wymer, not only is Kiwanis, but he's the president of the rodeo. And did a magnificent job on it as usual, sold out. And we have some good news, I think. We're working with the county to actually own that property right now. Going, right, right now, we actually don't own the rodeo grounds. We've leased and the, the BLM owns it, but the county administers it. Well, the county and we are going to the feds who have promised to give us that property if we do a certain number of things. Well, we did our part this last year when we built the restrooms out there. So we put stadium seats, we put restrooms. On the budget this year is to rebuild the announcer stand, which fell down a year or two ago. Hopefully, thank you. And we're working with the, with the rodeo on a, on a partnership to replace that. So big things are happening out at the rodeo grounds. That kind of defines the mystique behind Cave Creek. And I'm of course, a big supporter as a horse person. With that, we're going to open it up. And did I miss anything? Anybody else want to bring up anything that, from the town side that, that they'd like to, oh, I'm sorry. Nina, come this way. Nina runs the volunteer driven visitors bureau, but there are probably 30 people that volunteer to drive business to business house. It's all, and she hounds me every month to write an article. I just finished last night. It's on the way, Nina. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I've been volunteering at the tourism bureau and doing the Cave Creek Corner Newsletter for a long time. I just enjoy doing. For a long time, I just enjoy doing it. And so thank you for the opportunity for me to talk today. One thing that we did a couple of years ago, 2022, was a Cave Creek Concierge Tour. This was sponsored by the town and we had a bus coming in, we hired a bus to take concierge people and tourism affiliates through town for a few hours, telling them all the wonderful things about our town and why they should send their visitors up to us and ended the day with a meal for them. And they went home with a swag bag full of goodies and reminders of Cave Creek. And the great thing is we're doing it again in October. This is Cave Creek Tourism, Cave Creek Concierge Tour 2024. And pretty much doing the same thing. I've met with some of you who have businesses in town. And so I just want to mention, if you want free advertising and would like to be involved with the swag bag, and that's what I gave out, many of you got that when you came in. Take advantage of it. If you look at the picture on the cover of that handout, that swag bag back in 2022 was packed with really wonderful stuff representing our businesses in town. We had to have it tied on top. So things didn't spill out. Yeah. So if you would like to be represented in there as a Cave Creek business, please fill out the back, take a picture of it and email it to me or give it to me this morning and we would love to include you. If we get a lot of response on that, we're going to have to cut off because really we couldn't close the bag last year. So get it in early, get your, your form in early. We're not actually collecting till the beginning of September. And if you know other businesses that might be interested, please share the word with them. It's a great event. And we want them to leave with the thought that when visitors come to their concierge desk and asking them, oh, what should I do for a day trip today? The first thing they're going to say is go to Cave Creek. And that's the intent. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Nina. And, and thank you, Nina, for doing this for so long. She, she edits and writes a lot of the stuff in that, in the Cave Creek Corner. And I learned so much. I learned all about the, that, that art gallery that on the third Friday has a, an open house and I'm going to plan to go to that soon. So now, now we're just, anything else from staff? Okay. So who would like to start off with the discussion? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to ask a question. Is there anything here to address the issue that it's brought to attention? As well as, yes, the friends that I have coming in town is parking. Try this mic. The last part of that is, is are we doing anything to improve parking? Well, right now the, there is an active project, the Buffalo Chip frankly is the, has the event that is the biggest parking and pedestrian safety issue in town right now. And we're working with them. They are, are, had bought some land and I understand the plans are to turn that into a parking lot. And it's along Viola Lane, kind of to behind the gravel bit. And that is, is being, a big part of that is being converted to parking. So that's probably the most pressing issue right now. Beyond that, there are, there are no firm plans, but it's on the, it's on the agenda and it's on our strategic plan. We just, we just have to find the right opportunities.
Do we know how many spaces that's going to be? 100? Is that theirs or ours? So that'd be 100 spaces in total. Yeah. There you have it. 100 spaces.
We're good that way. So let me go with. Here we go. All right. All right. So I think where Mike was going with that is, yeah, we're talking about the east side. Whereas what do you want to call us? The west, the west side. As far as parking on that side, I think we're looking for management down there because that's where my building is and that's where Kiwanis is. There's no parking down there. So everything from the east side's being forced up in our area. There is no parking for, what do you want to call it? Janies. I'm sure you're getting the stuff out front of you. It's kind of chaos out there, but I don't know so much. We have a parking problem. We have a enforcement problem and we have a management problem of parking. Did I say that right? Okay. So that, well, liability because, because now, now we pushed it so far our way that we're out front of Dairy Queen now. And so when you have people coming out the drive-through, there's big duly trucks and stuff parked out there and you can't see to get out. There is no no parking signs out there. But all I've noticed just recently, all the trails that the town's spent money on the walkways, people are parking on them now and tearing it up. So I think we have a management and a law enforcement problem, if that makes sense.
Anybody from staff want to comment on that?
So if there's a sign that says no parking, obviously it's illegal to park on the side of the road. But absent those signs, it's perfectly legal to park on the side of the road. That being said, they're not allowed to go over the white line. If they're over the white line, they're obstructing traffic. Different issue. We did issue a citation for that yesterday. If there's a, a problem that we see that people are parking somewhere where they shouldn't be parking for safety reasons, obviously we can get with how the town council, we can get a no parking zone set up. We do have some no parking zones in town, but as a small town, we don't have a tremendous amount of no parking zones. Because we do have limited parking spaces.
Grady, may I reference to you to identify where the no parking zones and I, you know, I, I notice also that there's illegal parking in the deceleration zone at Mountainside Pub in the evenings. So. Joe?
So regarding home rule, what, when I'm wondering is if you could explain it a little more? Tell us why people wouldn't want to vote for it if we're going to go from 57 million to 5 million? And maybe even explain the pros and cons of it.
You want to take that, Grady?
Oh, okay.
So, so basically this goes back, some of you are probably familiar with California. California, back in the late seventies, there was a thing called Prop 13 and it was a tax limitation. A lot of people, you're finding that their taxes were going up tremendously every year. And a lot of seniors and people that couldn't afford the taxes just were demanding that something be done. So Arizona legislators and activists were watching what was going on in California. And so basically they put an expenditure limitation and amended our constitution to basically put a cap and the cap, it was basically put into place at the time of the law that was passed. And it has a complex formula that includes population growth and also economic growth, such as inflation and things like that. And so based on that, you know, we incorporated in 1986. So our number and our formula was based on 1986 numbers. But the way you can get around that, I don't want to say like you get around it, but the way that cities and towns have through this law is that they have to have with this expenditure limitation, either a home rule option, which basically means that the residents, that the taxpayers vote in place, the option to extend what that expenditure limitation cap is for their own community. I like that because the, the residents set that, but that has to be done every four years. Otherwise, if you don't get the residents to vote for that, then as the mayor was saying earlier, it goes back under the formulas back when we were incorporated as a city or town back in 1986. And that would be $5 million a year. So it's just, it's very, I, I understand why it was done. I think it works pretty well in Arizona, but it really is something we have to try to educate and try to inform the public as best as we can. And we're going to have a open house on this topic. I believe it's a week from this upcoming Monday. I believe it's at three o'clock. Right? Three o'clock? So, so that's what that's about. Now the, there's two options really. There is the home rule option. That's where you do this every four years. And then there's also what I would call a permanent base adjustment. And there's a number of cities that have done a permanent base adjustment. I recommend it. That's what the mayor was alluding to earlier. I think we probably go through this for the next four years. And when we reintroduce this and bring it back to voters, our population is not going to grow too much more than what we have currently today. We also, I think our, our finances and our budget is starting to stabilize. And so in four years, it will probably be pretty easy to project out into the future, what we will need for a permanent base adjustment. And when I say permanent base adjustment, the cities that have permanent base adjustments can always go back. You know, as they're starting to push up against their, their expenditure limitation cap, they can always go back and reintroduce a new permanent base adjustment. So when it says permanent base adjustment, it just means your base gets adjusted and you can keep for multiple years. So I hope I answered your question.
Five o'clock on the 24th is that meeting. Back in 86, we didn't have, we didn't have the fire department. We didn't have a water company and we didn't have desert hills or sewer. We didn't have as many roads. So just the population growth and the growth of town has added a tremendous amount. And I think the ironic thing is you'd be collecting all this money, but no way to spend it. So that 30 million bucks would, would go up pretty, pretty fast. We have reserves right now. Other, other comments? Anybody? Okay. Wayne?
Hi, everybody. Good morning. I wanted to just address the parking issue again, bring that back into the limelight. I'm all for Bike Week. Bike Week is the biggest problem, not Buffalo Chip, although Buffalo Chip every Wednesday or Wednesday, Friday and Saturday is an issue. But Bike Week is great for the three or four bars up at the end of town. And again, I'm all for it. I ride bikes. I love it, but it just kills every other business in town. I mean, it takes 40 minutes to get from one end of town to the other. And something has to be done other than using our main streets as parking for all these bikes and the traffic. I mean, it's just horrendous. I mean, I can live with the noise. I can live with the bikes going through town. But we, we, we choke off the, the main artery going through town. And we have two lanes, one going each way. And at that, it's still people crossing the street and so on and so forth. I mean, it is, it's, it's, it's a sludge and it's, it's, it's terrible for business. My two worst weeks of the year are Bike Week and April is my best month. So go figure that. But it, it's hard. It's hard for all the businesses to, to get by because people don't want to come up here. Unless you're a biker, you're coming up to see the fanfare. You don't want to come up here and even mess with this. And I don't even have to drive through this traffic and it's, it's, it's still a nightmare to deal with. And something has to be done to alleviate this, this kind of bottleneck that goes on for, for two, almost three weekends back to back.
Thank you, Wayne. That, that April's that golden month. That's when everything happens in Arizona because it's before it's real hot and it's after the real rainy season. So you got about a month or two there with very little rain and, and not as much heat. Okay. We, we've, you heard that we're, we're taking a look at things. Other, other comments? Bob, you wanted some time?
My name's Bob. Okay. I'm Bob. He is a local resident and been here in Cave Creek for about 30 years. And about 20 years ago, I built a, an observatory for imaging deep sky objects at night. And this is an example of what I do. And the thing that makes this possible are dark skies up here in Cave Creek. And the reduction of light pollution at night is, is very critical. And a lot of times I'm up till one or two o'clock in the morning, taking photographs of, of these dark sky objects in the night sky. And so the reduction of, of light pollution, as I said, is, is very important for what I do on a personal basis. So turning off security lights at appropriate time at night after business closes is, is important. Turning off security lights on residential homes is important. Having the right Kelvin temperature for, for light sources of 2700 Kelvin is something else that's very important. So things like that, you know, shielding is very important for reduction of light pollution at night. So as an encouragement to residents and local businesses to try to mitigate and reduce light pollution is really appreciated by the dark sky movement here in, in Cave Creek. So. With that, if you have any questions, be glad to, I'll be here after the meeting. Be glad to answer any questions about what I do. Yes, sir.
Bob, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate the dark sky initiative. However, you just mentioned security lights. Security lights are for the night when we have property here and we need to keep it lit, whether it be your home or business. In case you haven't noticed, we're butt up against the fifth largest city in the nation, Phoenix. And even on a dark night with no moon, the light is still bright here in town. It's, I appreciate what you've done with your little observatory. It might not be the best place to have it, but the security lights aren't going to go away. We can do some things to minimize it, but we're not a Sedona, we're not a Flagstaff. And we are next to one of the largest cities in the country and you're going to have light bleed from that, no matter what you do. And as far as security lights go, yes, you can shield them to a certain degree, but bottom line is there's lights in town and you're going to have that. You're going to have neighbors, they're going to have security lights around their property. They need to have it. Two weeks ago, we had at three o'clock in the morning, we had kids, we got them on camera, just coming around the back of our building and throwing rocks, bottles in the parking lot and just, just vandalizing. I own Rare Earth Galleries, sir. And it's an issue. Security is an issue for the whole town. And once the, the, it does get dark here, but not dark enough to do what you want to do. And I'm sorry about that. I really am because I'd love to come over and see it. I've, I have seven grandkids. Love to bring them by. But as far as trying to make Cave Creek a dark sky, I mean, you can go out to Spur Crush, you can go out to Seven Springs. To try to do that in the heart of the town, especially when you got the, the bars at the other end. It's so dark that, you know, dark enough that, you know, and everyone's wearing black. And you try to cross the street at night here, you take your life in your hands at night. But I, I don't see getting to where you want it to be. It's, it's just not a practical thing being this close to Phoenix.
I understand what Wayne is saying. Yeah, the center of town, definitely the security and all. I live about a block from Bob at the base of Panoramic Mountain. And my husband and I are not night owls, but a couple of weeks ago, we came home at one in the morning, late flight. And I was just impressed that our neighborhood was so dark that all of our following, I guess, eating regulations and all because now they're for security, but it was still. And I was very, very impressed. I do understand also the concern about businesses and security for their shops and, and things in town. So I'm hoping there's a way that we can have it both ways.
We're going to try to find that, that magic point where everybody, where everybody's happy. Impossible. So. happy. Impossible. So, just a second.
So I can clarify a little bit about the dark sky stuff. When you talk about dark skies, you're not talking about turning off all the lights. What you're talking about is shielding lights so they go downward. Wayne, the biggest problem is the string lights. There's little shields you can put on the string lights. They're fairly cheap. It's 25 bucks for a string of 50 of them. They're little plastic shields that pop over. That's what they're talking about. As long as your lights are shielded downward, you're pretty well dark sky compliant. So nobody's talking about turning off security, you know, security lights. Nobody's talking about any of that. What we're talking about is shielding it so the light goes down instead of going up into the sky. That's the big bleed over that we, that we see. And yeah, I live out in the, about a mile and a half south of Spur Cross. It's very dark at night, and the neighborhood's very dark. We're not talking about telling people you can't protect your property. That's, that's, that's a misnomer that's been out there. What we're talking about is shielding lights and pointing them down so that what needs to be lit up is lit up and not the rest of the universe. Does that help? No? Why is that? I understand that, but your security lights are pointed down, right? Yeah, okay, that's fine. No, no, it doesn't need to be shielded all the way to the ground. It needs to be shielded so it's generally towards the ground. Need to be shielded so you can't see it from the side? It's a need to be happening. You're always going to get that light bleed from Phoenix. All we're talking about is keeping the light bleeds to a reasonable level. I, I got it. But the same thing, if you take a look at the bars, the biggest problem that they have is the shielding of the string lights. If you shield the string lights, about half of the light pollution goes away. Surprise me. What do you mean? You're, you're. You're assuming that everything has to be dark, and that is just flat out not the case. What it does is minimizes lights going up. That's all dark sky is about. It's not about turning lights off. It's not about, it's not about saying you can't protect your property. It's about having the light point downwards instead of pointing in all directions like most lights do. If you take a look at the, the biggest light pollution that we have, it's primarily from string lights. If you're not using the string lights, turn them off. Or if you have to use them, and you're using them for security, put a little shield on them, little plastic shield, focus the left downwards. It's not a big deal. Expensive.
Okay, well, this, this debate will continue at, at council. We have, we have a ways to go. So let's, we'll have a process to try to bring this to a conclusion. Donna?
This is not really to do with dark skies, but more to Wayne's point about what happened at their gallery not too long ago. I'm not sure who's responsible for patrolling things at night, but I know where my business is at the end of Spur Cross Road, for anyone that doesn't know that. The things I've encountered in that parking lot at night, you know, drug users, kids messing around, things like that. I mean, maybe some of the answer is increasing security and patrols if there's a way, or that's possible, to make people feel like they don't need as many security lights and things because there's someone watching out for it. Because I know I worry constantly for the things that go on down near us. So I don't know, like I said, who's exactly responsible, if that's the marshal, or if it's the sheriffs, or who, or is there any talk about that, or increasing anything with that?
Well, the sheriff's station is right next door, and there's a little, little jail over there. And we have, we have a brand new captain who's, who's frankly been pointed by the town towards traffic enforcement. A little known tidbit is that of the traffic tickets given out, 70% are to red. That, that number blew me away. I thought, no, all these people from somewhere else. No, the problem's us. But this substation has four deputies on duty around the clock. Two are in Anthem because Anthem is, is a county, and two are up in this area here, unless there's something going on, then all the police go to one spot to, we had a jewelry store shooting up in Anthem back. But we're in a very, very low crime area. And our, our problems, the biggest problem with serious injuries, and you try to prioritize this, is people get hit by cars. That is the safety issue in town, I would say. I'm looking for a nod there. And that's what we're working the hardest on right now. But, but we do have sheriffs today, and when you call the sheriff, you're going to get someone respond to you.
Hey, Bob. Thank you, Mary Bob. Can you talk about sales tax? Is there any chance of lowering it? Because we have some of the highest in Maricopa, as you know.
No. I'm ser- seriously? We, I mean, the, the town just took on $5 million worth of, and we've needed it. We burned half the town down. So I do not see sales taxes going down. No. I said, there was a proposal, there was two proposals when we did the fire department three years ago. One was to increase the sales tax. And we said, hey, wait a minute, we're the highest now. We're gonna, Walmart's gonna leave, and then we're gonna leave. You can't drive Walmart out of town. And the second was, is to put a property tax in. We found a way not to do either one. And, but to actually lower it, I think that's a bridge too far. I don't know how we would cut fire, police protection. We don't have, we have very, very few open land for new businesses. See, that's what's going on. So you're pretty much going to get, inflation's going to take care of a general inflation. Like, we'll have the same real dollars in the future we have now. But we've been building a lot of new businesses. And those new businesses have essentially paid the $5 million a year. If we hadn't done that, you would have had a proposal, a vote for a property tax. Because if those five, if we hadn't had that, and we hadn't joined automatic aid, we'd have burned houses down this spring. And this is, this, it's going to be like this from now on. Because that, and the number of negligent people starting fires is just unbelievable. No, not, not, not for me. Yep, it's, we are doing a tremendous job just, just absorbing the body blows from the paving, from the fire, from the, putting the fire in, the water stuff. I mean, we, I mean, the, the town has got to very closely manage its finances to, to bring all the services and improvements we're bringing. I just don't see that happening. And I, I'd love to grow us out of this, but we don't have, what is it, a dozen spots, Stephen? We have a dozen properties still around for development? Yeah, yeah, about a dozen. So, sorry. Well, like I say, I was in business, and government never helped me. I helped myself. We have open properties here now that businesses don't want to come into. And we have businesses that are, I mean, true, not true, Ace Hardware just left Carefree. Carefree just lost a, a really, because they didn't have the right facility, and they moved, I guess, down where the old Albertsons is or something. So, you know, there just aren't a lot of opportunities out there. And we do have open property as we speak. We've got, I mean, I'd love to have somebody in Rebel Ranch. I mean, you got not, what, seven acres, nine acres, something like that over there with a facility and all that. And I love horses, and I'd love to have horses. And I've written in that on events and sortings. Well, it's not really, you're going to have a hard time convincing, you have to, number one, let's start with this, is I used to run a real estate department with 50 people in it, and business development for a Fortune 10 company. And businesses, we never went to towns and said, oh, gee whiz, we went out and found our own. Businesses generally go out and find their own. I, some towns put business development in. I don't, I personally don't think it's effective. Especially when you only have 12 spots in town to do it. I, I just, they, they got to make money once they get there. And I think that's the problem. If, if, if they can make money, I think they're going to be there.
The state legislature many, many years ago put in basically a state law that really prohibits incentivizing industry and business coming to, now, you've seen like with the microchip plant, the state can do that, but we can't necessarily do that. What we can do is if there's any public improvements, if they had to make like street widenings or any public improvement sidewalks, we can do reimbursement for those improvements that they had to put in. But it's limited to the public improvements. We, we are prohibited from just like, you know, like rebating sales tax if they're going to generate a lot of sales tax. It has to be tied to some improvement they basically put into the town.
On that note, from a tourism bureau perspective, yeah, you're not going to lower sales tax. But for businesses to come in, in my opinion, there has to be a draw. And the more a company or a business sees that, you know, talking about the town core, that this is a tourist destination. If I get a business in Cave Creek, into Cave Creek, I'm going to make bucks because it's a tourist destination. And I feel that we need to be putting more effort into drawing into the only business, this is the main business in our town, is tourism. So my suggestion is that more of our town budget go towards marketing, the town of Cave Creek as a visitor destination. I'm sure Donna would love to see more visitors coming in, riding horses, as well as going to Rare Earth and up the museum. And so this is something I've asked for, for numerous years, is more of a push on promoting our town for visitors, because this is our business in this town. The other question, going back to lighting, is please enlighten me, how do town ordinances address security wise, those motion sensor lights? Is that against the rules? Is that okay? It would seem to me that would be a situation where when people are on your property, then the lights go on.
So as the council member had indicated, it's, it's really, people have a misnomer about dark skies, thinking that they don't see lights. And that's not the case. It's all about having, you know, moderation with the lights, making sure that lights are the right color, the right Kelvin, the right number of lumens. So as far as that goes, as far as security lights, there's really no issues with the motion detectors. They just have to be reasonable. They can't stay on like if, if an animal or a human passes by a motion detector that causes the light to illuminate, it can't just stay on for hours. And, and so a lot of these dark sky ordinances that are in effect, it's just with reasonableness. So like a light might come on, and it only stays on for, you know, a minute or so, and then it shuts off. Same thing with businesses. A lot of times, it's during the, the business hours of operation. Right now, that's in our current books in the ordinances. So it's just, it's just, it's reasonableness. It's not anything. And as far as shielding, what council member Rose was talking about, shielding is the light fixture itself. The light fixture actually shields so there isn't bleeding from the sides, and it's directed downwards. So it's all in the fixture that does that. It's not, and it's, it's how you install and you angle the, the light fixture. So I hope I answered your question. I'm relatively new, and I'm just getting into this. I will look into the marketing budget, Nina, and see what we're doing. I mean, I think we're doing a tremendous amount for being a shoestring budget that I've seen. And I will certainly look at what we can do. Where I came from previously in Fountain Hills, we're able to get a lot of grants to help fund all of our marketing. So we can certainly look at that and see where we can go after the, the state tourism office and, and some other marketing grants. So, sure, okay. Here you go, Mayor.
Bob, is this on? Bob, addressing the sales tax. Not crazy about it, but it is what it is. And we, and we do need to fund the town. As a property owner up here, I'm not crazy about seeing property taxes either. So I'm okay with the sales tax. Question I have is some of the permit fees that are going on, you say you want to bring new business in here. And there's several people that have looked at Rebel Ranch. I'm looking at other property to develop here in town. And some of these permit and access fees are getting prohibitive. And it, it, you look at it, and it almost doesn't pencil. And it's, you know, for access, for water, for sewer, for electric, those types of things, and the permit to build, and so on and so forth. This starts to become a very complex and expensive procedure. And it's bad enough in what, what's happening with building costs and things like that. I was looking at a building that I started to do at the beginning of pandemic. They wanted $2.5 million to build it. I just got a quote yesterday from a builder I'm not going to use. It was 4.5 million. I said, show me a building in town that's 4.5 million. But the, the, some of these fees, and I'll talk to you offline about this at another time, but sales tax isn't as big an issue to me, is some of the things that the people come in here that are actually wanting to develop retail business.
Well, the, I just want to say that the, the fees that are charged are, are not taxes. They are fees to, to buy the service. I mean, everybody's got to pay to run the water lines to your house, electric lines to your house, sewer lines away from, and so they, directly tied to the, is it, okay, they're directly tied to the expense of doing that. So, so their activity, they're, they're not just, they're not taxes. And competitively, they're a heck of a lot lower in Scottsdale and Phoenix. We looked at, we looked at Phoenix, and Phoenix, where we were charging $7,000, they were charging 35. That was when we were building Sprouts down there. But I, you know, I, I understand. What I can do is say, we're going to keep them as low as we can, just barely cover what it costs. Joe?
This has a little bit of business coming into town. I've been walking around, talking to people, and a lot of people want to know about focus on the family. Going on with focus on the family, you know, I would like to hear what you guys have to say about it just overall. I'd like to know when it's going to be completed. I'd also like to know how is it going to be taxed?
I don't know anything about, about the, this is going to be like any other one in town. They have, they have property rights to build as long as they follow the rules. They have right to be taxed fairly with everybody else has. So, you know, it's, yeah, oh, thank you.
Um, council member Rhodes reminded me, it is a, it's not a nonprofit, and so it's going to be run as a for-profit. And it's going to be more of a lodging establishment. Therefore, the bed tax that typically lodging pays, so that will be coming to the town. Keep your fingers crossed that they stay as a for-profit, because if it becomes nonprofit, then that they become a tax exempt organization and don't have to remit that.
Thank you for the comment. Other questions? Seeing none. Oops. Wayne, you're going to wear this microphone out. Have issues, but are you going to?
So I, I do have one little question. Don't go far, Bob. This is going to be quick. I noticed that, like, when I built my property, I had to have a 20, 10, 20 foot setback from the street, give that to the town. And I noticed that this, this building they're putting up, they called it family, they're building. And I noticed that this this building they're putting up, you called it family, they're building almost right up to the street to the bike lane. And I was looking at that the other day. And I mean, they're they have a cinder block wall that's coming just within five feet of the street. And that's not a setback. There's no room for trail. The bike lane is probably going to have to be moved. I mean, it's right, going to be right up against their building. How is that even happening?
Thankful. I don't have to answer that.
Hey, Wayne. Wayne, are you referring to the wall or the building itself? Because the building hasn't even gone through its footer stage or anything on that. And the wall is allowed to go up to the property boundary if it doesn't exceed a certain height. And that's something we've inspected. Are you referring to the the building concern of going up beyond the building setback or which one? Okay. So the wall is going right up to the easement that they dedicated to the town. So there's a trail easement there. Okay, but we had done inspections and then we confirmed that as well, based off the surveys that they provided, the point sheets and the markings that they had upon the inspections. So definitely, if you want to take a time to go out there and meet and take a look at it so I could inform you on kind of what I saw at the inspection, be happy to do so. That's why I said if you, we can arrange a time to go out there together and take a look at it if you'd like. Yeah. I'd like hanging out with you, Wayne.
Hey, Joe. Forcing I really can't really answer that because they have phases in buildings because there's a portion where they have the resort, the I think there's like a cafeteria as well. There's just different buildings that are phased out in this. So as far as full on completion, really can't give you an answer on that, unfortunately. I'm sorry. Hey, Cap. Hey, Vice Mayor. As a step down, kind of as far as, yes, so upon the inspections that I've gone to, it's from the natural grade and they did dig down. So it's six feet in height from the natural grade. So it does step down, but they have provided the cross sections as far as the inspection process, doing the due diligence on that, making sure that they have done that certified by engineers and surveyors on their end. So it was reviewed and approved and viewed as compliant at the time and as well with the inspections. And it is required in certain sections because of being abutted to the residential property. So that would
No, it's nice job. Nice job. Okay, anybody else? This is the last chance. If I don't see any hands, we're going to adjourn. Seeing no further. Thank you very much for coming today. Tell your friends and neighbors. We, this is our lowest attended. We need more people here. So thank you very much.